And you're on.
Thank you, Tina. Good evening. We've already started the meeting in open session before going into executive session. We've now reconvened in an open session. For Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law 30A Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast and also our live streaming. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021, which were recently extended until March of 2023. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as it is practical to. Members of the public who wish to join may do so by accessing the link on the Gill-Montague Regional School District website. It can be found under School Committee Notices and Agendas for Upcoming Meetings, and it will have tonight's school committee meeting date. We are live streaming as well as broadcasting on MCTV, and a recording will be made available on MCTV and the district website after this meeting. And we'd like to welcome any visitors that we have this evening. This would be the time for public participation because that policy, BEDH, has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely. But we do not have anyone this evening who is waiting to participate that way. Anyone in the Zoom audience, unless you are part of the meeting, as we have some guests now, thank you for joining us all. Please, otherwise, if you're just in the audience, keep your camera and microphone off. That will be helpful. Thank you, and we'd like to welcome our principals. It's nice to see you all this evening. We'll be working shortly on the handbooks. Thanks for joining us. Brian, if you'd like to do important events to begin with?
Sure. So tomorrow night is the Great Falls Middle School New Student Orientation from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. At Great Falls Middle School. The ninth grade and new high school student orientation will follow on Thursday evening from 5:00 to 6:30. Friends of Hillcrest meetup on Sunday, August 28th, will take place from 9:00 a.m. to noon. And the Friends of Hillcrest Chalk Walk event will be on Wednesday, late afternoon, August 31st, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. New Teacher Orientation is a full-day event this Friday. New Paraprofessional Orientation will be held August 31st in the Turner's Falls High School Library. And I wanted to say thank you to the principals and Jean Powers for putting that together. We have not ever had a new paraprofessional orientation before, and we're hopeful that we can continue to improve on that from year to year. Staff Opening Day and the Convocation take place next Monday. Opening Day for Students in Grades 1 through 12, Thursday, September 1st. Opening Day for Students in Pre-K and K is Thursday, September 8th. And then Pre-K and K start full days on Thursday, September 15th. And I had two items that did not make it to the agenda as I just found out today in a meeting with Melissa Bednarzki that we have set up two vaccine clinics. One for September 13th at Gill Elementary, and that will be from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. And another one on Thursday, September 15th, which will be at Turner's Falls High School from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. And that's it for events.
Thank you, Brian. We will be having a student representative return, I believe, once school has started. I think it will be seen again, which will be great. But at this point, we don't expect them to come in the summer. And therefore, Brian, your superintendent's report?
Sure, just have a couple of recognitions. First, I wanted to thank Director of People's Services Diane Ellis for her efforts in bringing the second summer of the Rising Stars Program to our summer program. This summer, 12 secondary students worked in a variety of leadership, student support, and community support activities. The group participated in two walking field trips to the Brick House where they participated in seminars on resume writing, communications skills, and personal goal setting. The students also received training in providing encouraging feedback to younger children and applied this training by supporting Sheffield Summer Program students in their classrooms each morning. Each of the students also received CPR and first aid training and were able to earn a babysitting certification. They also participated in a garden project and completed a culminating activity summarizing their summer experience. In addition, the Rising Stars also completed surveys at the end of the summer to provide feedback to Ms. Ellis to help make improvements for the program in future years. But thank you again to Diane Ellis for the work that she's done in putting this program together and providing these students the opportunity to develop those skills. It was an excellent, excellent summer for these students and the work they did and the contributions that they made to the younger kids and to our school community. So thank you also to the students who participated every day. I also wanted to thank Director of Teaching and Learning Jean Powers. In June, and then again this past Monday, June facilitated the updated training for our district teachers who serve as mentors to teachers who are new to the district. Between the two meetings, 24 teacher mentors received training that focused on teacher roles and responsibilities. Really, a lot of focus placed on the support needs of new teachers versus teachers who might be veteran teachers but are just new to the district. A great deal of time was spent on doing meaningful peer observations and providing, you know, sound feedback to colleagues that they're observing, as well as differences and similarities between student learning and adult learning. And the final activities were centered on helping teachers understand what is unique about our district and each of our schools. So thank you to Jean for making improvements to, not only to our mentor program, but really updating the training for our mentor teachers. I did also want to share that the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education voted 8 to 3 to increase MCAS scores that qualify for the competency determination that allows students to receive a diploma along with the local graduation requirements. The board voted to raise the competency determination threshold, ELA, from the current minimum score of 472 to 486 for the class of 2026. That's the entering freshman class at Turner's Falls High School. Math will remain at a score of 486 for the competency determination and was not increased. However, I did want to add that something that was tucked into, we've only seen press releases. We haven't gotten anything official from DESI yet. But in those press releases, this vote and proposal also indicates that the class of 2031 will need a score of 500 in both math and ELA to achieve the competency determination. So that's just sort of a basic summary that I wanted to provide to the committee. You know, from press releases, when we get something directly from DESI, I will probably also show that when we do our presentation of our district's MCAS scores. And then, as far as COVID is concerned, I-
Brian, could we do a couple of questions right now rather than waiting?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Is that okay? I think I see John and then Bill.
Yeah, I don't quite understand how the competency in Massachusetts, how competency is, can be changed, how you can decide by, this is ignorance on my part, but what's that Massachusetts philosophy that says the level of competency, you can just arbitrarily change it on the exam?
Well, they set a threshold of initially in both math, in mathematics, ELA, and science. And there really is no change to the science scores. There is just a, so that wasn't included in this.
And you'll have to excuse me, but who is "they"? I think I missed that.
The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
So this is a state-level decision?
It's the Board of Education. And so they've been in conversation for quite some time about considering changing the scores because the scores had been, the passing scores had been in a category of Needs Improvement. The categories have now changed to, the category that used to be Needs Improvement is now Partially Meeting Expectations rather than Needs Improvement. And so there are two categories above that, Meeting Expectations and Exceeding Expectations. And-
Yep. One thing for me, when I, I've wrestled with standardized tests and, you know, the issues around them for, you know, all my career. And for me to really understand what it means, I actually have to look at the problems themselves, you know, because then I understand, well, this is what, so where can I get copies of MCAS tests just in general? And maybe I can ask you this, so I'm not wasting time here, Brian.
Yeah, you know what? I have some resources, John, that I can, I can provide to you. And, and we can chat about them on the phone, or you could come pick them up in person. That will give you a little bit more of an explanation of the thresholds, the scores.
If you can send me some links, then I won't waste any more time here, and then that would help me to, right, okay, thank you.
Sorry. Heather, you hand up?
Did I see your hand?
I was just gonna tell him he can just go to the MCAS Resource Center online, but I can send it to him.
Okay, thanks, Heather. Yeah, and then, John, if you have any questions, you could either call me or myself or Jean Powers. Okay.
Thanks.
I just wanted a reference on, as with the SATs, it's a maximum score of 800. What's the maximum score in the MCAS?
560. So the range of scores is 440 to 560.
Okay. And will they change the upper limit when they propose to go to 500?
No, that's not included in the, in the proposal. But what the commissioner did highlight was that part of the rationale was that those students who were receiving the competency determining, he framed it as an issue of equity, that those students who are receiving the competency determination in the range of 470 to 500 or partially meeting expectations, only 11% of them were going on to four-year colleges. And so that was one item that was mentioned in the press releases as being a data-based equity issue that they felt like they needed to move more students, they needed to leverage schools to move more students into meeting expectations and exceeding expectations.
Which begs the question, then, about how valid is all of the argument around we need to have more vocational stuff? More, what kind of opportunities are we providing to people that aren't planning to go on to a four-year school, college? They don't want to matriculate to a higher education. How does that, how does DESI address that with this proposal?
I don't think they do, you know, and I'm just speculating. I think that what they're, what they're attempting to do is, again, to leverage schools to elevate the opportunities for every student. And to do that through standardized testing, people will have a broad breadth of opinions on it. But it's, it's the path they've chosen at this particular point.
Yeah, no, thanks. I didn't expect you'd have the answer, but I just wanted to throw the question out.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. And then, so in in COVID-related information, I did, on the agenda, I put a link because I couldn't put it, I couldn't manage to get the link onto my summary report, but I did put a link under Superintendent's Report to DESI's COVID Advisory. The CDC, as of this past Monday, has ranked Franklin County as medium risk of transmission. And as you look down the area towns for case counts and percent positivity, you know, we know that many people who are, in fact, contracting COVID are not reporting it to public health authorities, and most people are testing positive through at-home tests. So we do know that the numbers are higher than what's reported, whereas the percent positivity might actually be lower than what's reported. And so that's it for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Brian. Does anyone else have any questions or comments for Brian at this point? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, Business and Operations Report. Joanne?
I just wanted to give you an update on the Sheffield floors and the Gill floors. So both projects have been completed. The floor, Hillcrest and Gill, the floor projects are both completed. And we're getting the schools back in order, getting everything back in place. At Hillcrest, that meant rebuilding the kitchen. All the equipment had to be removed from the kitchen. We did go over budget on the floor project at Hillcrest because when they took the asbestos out, there was a layer of something in between the concrete and the asbestos that they thought they could put the flooring right over. But in the end, they couldn't put the flooring over it, and that all had to be removed. So to remove that, when we removed asbestos, might have been a little bit cheaper, but it wasn't removed. And so we had to pay extra to have that removed separately. So once that was removed separately, they were able to level the floor and put the floor sealer on there to get the floors in good shape. And that doesn't leave us any money for carpets in the classroom. So we're gathering all of the invoices on that so we can get a good accounting of it. And then we are also putting together an estimate to bring back to the town of Montague. We'd like to get this back on the special town meeting to approve more funding so we could do some of the classrooms like we had hoped to do. So once I have an estimate for that, hopefully at your next meeting, I can bring that to you. I think I'd need to get something to the town next week. So it'll, it'll come to you after, but I just want to get them some information to get it started.
Thank you, Joanne. Moving on to School Committee Reports. We need a vote to approve the warrant that has been signed. It's warrant number 3310, dated 8/24/2022. It's an AP warrant, meaning accounts payable. It's to pay our bills. The amount for this warrant is $102,805.22. I will entertain a motion to approve that.
Joan, Jane?
Yes.
I actually just had one question, or maybe to Joanne, on the, on the detail page of the, of the voucher detail listing. And I couldn't help notice on page 11, the first line item says Warriors, I think that's Jennifer's last name, Crayons Marcus Point Construction. I just thought that was kind of, you know, interesting in a way that this line item started off with the last name of one of our members. And I was trying to see whether that's a coincidence or, or-
It's a teacher with the same last name.
I see. Okay, all right, okay. I just, you know, there's something, a question, so, okay, all right, thank you.
Sure. Yep, yep, she, Jennifer didn't order crayons, but that's a good question.
I mean, I wouldn't have thought so, but I couldn't help it, you know, there it was. I'm sorry.
It is a good question. It's why everybody detail.
In most cases, that name is in a different section. You don't see it when you approve it. But that school puts the name on that line, and so we just, if we move that up, you won't see it in the future.
All right, okay.
It does look confusing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Heather moved.
Heather moved, thank you.
Second.
Second, Bill, thank you. And we'll have a roll call vote. Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. Moving on to the business section, we need to review and approve the updates on the school handbooks. And we have, as guests, our principals, which is very nice. I believe the first one is the Gill Handbook.
So Jane, actually, the, I was gonna ask that the three, I put, the three elementary principals made their handbook changes together. So I'm gonna ask that the, the elementary principals, Sarah Burstein, Carrie Heathwaite, and Walter, present their summary of changes at the same time. And then Christopher will follow with the high school and middle school handbook.
Okay, that'd be very helpful if they're done the same. So for the listening audience, that will be the Gill Elementary School Handbook, the Hillcrest Elementary School Handbook, and the Sheffield Elementary School Handbook.
Yep.
Thanks.
Who wants to start?
I believe Sarah, you're gonna start and kind of share the overview, and then each one of us will share anything that's unique, right?
Very good. Yes, that's exactly what's going to happen. I was just having trouble sharing my tab with our summary.
Click on Share Screen.
I did.
The very bottom.
And then you're gonna go to the, to the actual summary and double-click on it.
Yeah, I know, it's just not giving me that. It's giving me a Zoom, and Tina, it's not giving me my open tab.
I can, I should, I'm pretty sure I have it open. If I don't, I will open it and share it from here.
I have it open. I just can't see it when I-
Go ahead, Sarah, and just share whatever screen you've got, and then go for-
Okay, all right. Hang on.
And then you can minimize.
Yep, there we go. We're good. Okay, sorry, everybody.
No, that's great.
Okay. Um, so hello, School Committee. I'm Sarah Burstein. I'm the principal at Hillcrest Elementary. And some of you I know and some of you I don't, so thank you for having us here tonight. And, you know, we're glad to have the opportunity to share this with you. I always think it's a nice way to start the year, and oftentimes, one of you has eagle eyes and finds something that we've missed. So it's usually really helpful. So thank you. And as Brian mentioned, the three elementary principals worked together on these changes. And that was a great collaborative experience. So right now, I'm gonna highlight the shared changes, which you can see on this document. And then I will run through Hillcrest changes, and then Carrie will run through the Sheffield changes. And then Walter will close out with the Gill changes. And, you know, feel free to interrupt me if you need to. So the changes in common across the three elementary handbooks are an update to the life-threatening allergy policy. I believe the life-threatening allergy policy was updated last year. So it had not been fully aligned across all three of our handbooks. So we made sure that the language is exactly the same across the three elementary handbooks. We also updated the section on our cafeteria and school meals to reflect the life-threatening allergy policy. And there was a reference to seating that is no longer relevant. So that was removed. And the school meals program was also updated based on changes that were given to us by Molly Brooks, our new food services director. And that mostly had to do with the universal school meals approved by the governor a few weeks ago. Another important update is that the fluoride program is no longer being offered in our elementary schools. I don't have the details on why, but we did get that communication from Melissa Bednarzki, our district nurse leader. And the civil rights and Title IX coordinator names and information, along with the Title I coordinator information. No, not Title I coordinator, 504 coordinator information has been updated. The copy of the Hillcrest handbook that you have may not be updated. I updated it after I sent the version to, to Brian. I was away on vacation. So those are the overall changes. I'll move into Hillcrest specific unless anyone wants to ask questions about those overall changes. Nope, okay. So Hillcrest's specific changes, we changed our student arrival time from 8:25 to 8:20. We're bumping the arrival time back to 8:20 in order to facilitate breakfast after the bell. There are some funding changes that mandate that breakfast at Hillcrest be served after the start of the school day. And we chose to have children enter the building a little bit earlier to, you know, just take off their jackets, hang up their backpacks, have our paraprofessionals take attendance, take lunch orders so that when the school day starts at 8:30 and they enter into their classrooms and are greeted by their teachers, they're ready to get started with the day and to sit down to breakfast. We're really hoping that that allows for a relaxed breakfast as well as a fairly efficient process in starting, starting instruction. I just want to note that Unit A staff are not going to be responsible for students between 8:20 and 8:30. I want to be very clear that the Unit A day begins at 8:30. So that's just an important change and sort of has a few repercussions for children and adults. We have updated our staff list to reflect new employees. We've updated the table of contents, just, you know, to reflect some reformatting. And then the principal's welcome letter was updated as well. So that's Hillcrest. Any questions there, or should we move on to Sheffield? Jane, I can't hear you.
Thanks. Thank you, Sarah. If anyone does have a question, I can only see a few of the squares. So if you have a question, I don't see your hand. Just go right ahead as we're finishing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Carrie Heathwaite. And like Sarah said, it was very nice to work collaboratively with Sarah and Walter to make sure that our handbooks are aligned and that, you know, to review all of the policies in place. Some additional changes that were made to the Sheffield handbook is that I updated the language regarding a snack from home. I think that was in there for the COVID policy. So we just changed that to say that, you know, students are welcome to bring a healthy snack from home. Added language that just allowed also an email. It was, it was not listed as a method of communication for dismissal. So in addition to notes or phone calls, emails are also acceptable. I updated the staff list to reflect our two new employees, and so we're excited to welcome them to Team Sheffield. We did update the language to reflect the same language at Gill Elementary School to, you know, include the snacks that were allowed to come from home. So there were two sections in the handbook for that. The table of contents was updated, and previously there were not page numbers. So I added page numbers so that it was easier to find the locations throughout the handbook. Of course, I changed the principal's welcome letter to be from me, so that was brand-new into the handbook. And just like at Hillcrest Elementary School, we'll be greeting and welcoming students to the building at 8:20 this morning for a similar reason to Sarah, that we want students to come in and be ready for breakfast at the bell. Are there any questions about the Sheffield handbook? Thank you.
And for the Gill changes, the first one actually is incorrect. We moved ours from 8:25 to 8:15. The reasoning is we're, we're able to have breakfast before the bell rings, so we're gonna have students be coming in at 8:15. Like Sarah said, it does not affect Unit A employees. We have powers that will be covering and supervising students starting at 8:15. The reason why we need to do that is that our special subjects for Grade 5 start at 8:35 or 8:40, I think it is. So they need to come in, get ready. We do morning message, and they're out the door starting their special subjects. So we need to move things very, very quickly. And so we're trying to, also, there's language in the handbook to remind parents that school starts at 8:30 and that 8:35 students will be marked tardy if they're not in their seats. This is, we want to encourage students to be on time and for parents to drop them off. Teachers shared over the summer how it started to inch up, and then we had kids arriving at 8:45, 8:50, 8:55 for school. And so we wanted to try and encourage students to get on, to come to school on time. We've updated some of the staff list for the new employees. We have two people that, at the time, if this was sent to Brian, we hadn't affirmed or confirmed who our new kindergarten teacher would be and who our new PE teacher would be. So we'll need to go back in and change those, so they'll be officially in the handbook. We updated the table of contents. We updated, of course, the principal's welcome letter. We dress code, we, for the dress code, we removed the word orderly. We had a discussion about what does orderly mean, and we really couldn't come up with a definition. So we said, let's get rid of it, because if we can't define it, how can we enforce it? And then the last is added no transportation provided for school choice students. Before COVID, there was a bus that used to bring, in my understanding, there was a bus that would bring children from Montague and Turner Falls. COVID, because of space, that bus was, was taken away, and that will continue to be. So if parents want to bring their children or to participate in school choice for Gill, they'll need to bring their children to Gill. So those are the changes for the Gill Elementary Book. Any questions for Gill Elementary? Jane? Oh.
Do that. Yeah, no, I think that's great. Thank you. The only-
Nick has a question.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Oh, sorry. Missed you there, Nick. I blinked.
I, I have a question about the nut allergy stuff. Because I can't find our policy on it. Is it that are tree nuts still banned from the school entirely? Or are we going back to having a separate area in the cafeteria for students?
Sarah, do you want to take that? Do you want me to take it?
I'm happy to take it. Um, yeah, Nick, it's, it's peanuts and tree nuts. And all products containing peanuts and tree nuts are banned. It's on page fifteen of the, of the Hillcrest handbook. I can read it to you if you want. Me too.
I was just wondering, because it's not like super clear, because if I'm looking at the Gill handbook right now, under the section that says peanut and food allergies. And it sort of implies that there's going to be a separate area in the cafeteria.
Okay, it should read, I think the language that we agreed on, um, it says GM RSD is a nut-safe district. No nut products or food will be allowed in school buildings or offered through the school meal program. This includes peanuts, peanut butter, any other nut-based spread such as almond butter or hazelnut, i.e. Nutella. Please understand, safety is our first responsibility. We hope we can all work together as a community to support all families and students that this may impact. We also ask that no outside food be brought into school for birthday slash holiday celebrations. As in the past, no sharing of food is allowed either at school or on the bus. This policy will be reviewed annually and further changes will be made as needed.
Yeah, I guess.
Or, or are you on the, the like cafeteria page?
Right, when you scroll down to the part about, you know, like meals and payments and snacks and all of that stuff. The language there doesn't really align with what the policy is. Also, I just want to say personally, I hate that policy. I totally understand it, but I hate it because it makes it really hard to feed my kid.
I don't have anything about a table in, in my handbook. I know, I know the language you're referring to, Nick, because I do remember it from previous handbooks. But in the Hillcrest handbook, we removed that part.
Table, it just says, it says that the Gill cafeteria does not serve any peanut butter or peanut products and provides a safe and inclusive cafeteria environment. Efforts will be made to ensure a tablet is not sitting alone in this area. So it sort of implies that the peanut-free table still exists.
Yeah, I do see what you're saying. That's, that's, needs some clarification, definitely.
Well, thank you.
No, thank you for pointing that out, Nick. So Walter, if you don't mind, just checking that section to just make sure it reads the same way as.
I'm, I'm taking notes as Nick is talking, so.
Thanks, Walter.
We also noticed, there was one thing that Brian caught. After it went to his office, that the last page, I know for the Gil book, the calendar has last year's calendar and not this year's calendar. So that will be changed as well. There were just some little things that we'll make sure that are cleaned up or they're passed out to parents next week.
Yeah, so there's some, a little bit of directory information that um, I will email out to all of the principals to make sure that you have it for your handbook. Before you post it. One in particular, just making sure that everybody has the um, school committee members' names and their particular roles on the committee. So I'll make sure that you have that in an email, the text in an email that you can copy and paste into your documents before you post them.
Any other questions anyone has about the elementary? I did notice that those were being done probably about the same time as Brooke was appointed to school committee. So um, that's one of the things Brian will send you, Brooke Martino being our new member, and she hasn't been here that long, so.
Thank you all very much. And uh, elementary principals, you're free to go about your, your home lives again.
Thanks, everybody.
And now to do Turner Falls High School and Great Falls Middle School summary of changes to the handbook is Principal Christopher Barnes.
Evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. I don't think I know everybody, but again, I'm Christopher Barnes. I've been here a year now and we appreciate all that you guys are doing to support our district and for our district. So thank you for that. And then thank you also for your question. Because would you believe the high school handbook is, is wrong on that? On the peanut piece, it actually has really outdated language, which says that we do serve peanut butter and peanuts. I would imagine we read over that so quickly because, you know, it's been the case in so many districts that nobody serves peanut butter anymore. So um, you know, sometimes when you make that assumption in your mind, um, you read something that's not there. So let me see if I can um, share the screen with the changes. Everybody see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so just to be clear to the entire committee, um, currently, our handbook is inaccurate with regard to peanuts and, and what we're serving. That will be changed according to be in line with the district policy. Generally speaking, the Great Falls Middle School handbook is shorter than the Great, than the Turner Falls High School handbook. And um, and we refer to it and we put some language in the Great Falls Middle School handbook to say, refer to the high school handbook. But the changes are as follows. I got here on August second or something like that last year and wasn't able to do a thorough review of the handbook. This year I did certainly more thorough review. And um, I just wanted to change some things because I felt like it didn't flow very well. I felt like, you know, having a welcoming message right at the beginning, right inside the front flap was important. So adjustments to sections, principal's message was moved just to just inside the front cover to create more of an open, opening and welcoming statement. Then, of course, the table of contents follows the principal's statement. All of that had, had been in behind the district mission statement and everything that follows here. The next, the next several sections remain in the same order, district and school mission statements, district and school personnel and the district calendar, the bell schedules and the academic calendar. Again, now those are all listed with page numbers, but they're, they follow directly after the table contents. The next part that was an adjustment to a section was the attendance, which was buried in the second half of the handbook. Given, given, given the struggles with attendance that we've had and, um, you know, from the return from COVID last year. And um, one of the principals, one of the elementary principals mentioned, um, you know, some creep of um, tardiness. Well, we had certainly a lot of tardiness creep. You see that more at the secondary level than you see at the elementary level. Plus, plus too many absences. I thought it was important to really put this up front so that it's, it's clear to everybody. And not only that, but to tie in the um, the um, policy language more directly, and I'll get to that in a moment. Students' responsibilities section follows attendance as it had before. And this effectively moves it up. Um, and it just feels like it flows um, from an informational perspective. More fluidly, the remainder of the handbook were floated. So on attendance, beginning on page twelve, the types of excused and unexcused absences were listed to create greater, greater clarity. The attendance procedures were written out and listed for greater clarity. One change in our procedures at the high school and the middle school is that parents will receive an automated phone call each time that their child is absent. Okay, so um, you know, this was not in place. And, and we're hoping this all works out seamlessly, but you know, many, many schools are doing this. And um, so they'll get that call. They'll know that the child is at home and, and that's fine. But um, that can also prompt them to call the school or send in a note to have that excuse. Another thing that I caught here was that our handbook previously indicated that at seven absences, students and parents would meet with the principal. However, the GM RSD policy indicated the number was five. That number can come up pretty quickly on more than a few students. And whether or not we want to change that, I didn't think that now's the time. We would want to bring that to school committee and for discussion. So we just changed the handbook to reflect that number five as per the policy. Any questions so far? Okay, cell phones obviously a big deal here. The GM RSD policy language on cell phones and electronics has been added specifically. That should be, it's a typo. On page twenty-one, the following policy language was emphasized. So this is from the policy and I just inserted the word cell phones there. While certain electronic communication devices, as in cell phones, are allowed in the school, the use of personal telecommunication devices on school property is prohibited during school hours, except under certain circumstance, under circumstances listed in this regulation. So um, there is language in the regulation to provide leeway at the schools to have the procedures that they feel best fit the school. So the language that we're using is that Turner Falls High School, in accordance with the GM RSD policy, we believe that the use of cell phones and personal electronics by students during the school day is inconsistent with an environment that is conducive to learning. Therefore, the use of cell phones and personal electronics on school property is regulated to the following procedures. Students must have phones and other devices off and away in classrooms at all times. Students may use their devices during passing time and lunch, but they may, they must have headphones and be played at a volume which others cannot hear. Then furthermore, just to be clear, Bluetooth speakers or other similar devices are not permitted on school grounds. And that last statement is certainly in line with the beginning of the policy language. Just from a historical perspective, last year when the students came back to in-person, the middle school was operating in the same way that they had previously. Students were, were to have their cell phones, electronic devices in their lockers away, period. That creeped out in the middle of the winter when lunch period feels very long. And um, and we want to permit kids to, you know, play games on their phones or whatever. And then that sort of bled out from there. At the high school, it was really left to the teachers to say, put away the phones. But um, you know, it becomes a problem in more than a few places. So um, you know, after talking with faculty, this is what we decided to do. And um, just wondered if anybody has any questions about any of that or any concerns about any of that.
I just, I see John. Yep.
Yeah, I would just say, I, I was a teacher for twenty-five years, but in California. And it really helps with admin backup on those issues, especially for new teachers. You know, so if you can give them all the support and know that they're supported, that'd be great.
Thanks, John. It's, I'd love to say that it'll be easier, but this is what we're going to do. I personally believe that, you know, let's pay attention to the teachers and learn what we're here to do rather than be distracted. And uh, Lord knows, those phones are distracting everybody these days. Any other questions or comments on that part?
I, I just personally, um, I think, Christopher, I think it's, it's, I appreciate the fact that you are recognizing what the.
You froze.
Sorry, Jane, your, your voice froze.
Jane, you're going to have to try that again.
I know, I just saw. I was really hoping to be saying something that mattered here and my computer didn't want me to. I appreciate the way, Christopher, that you and your staff are approaching this. I think some districts have gone to locking cell phones in pouches. While I understand why sometimes that may seem necessary, I think this appears to be being a way to help students and families. It's a more learning process with education and there, because cell phones and other devices are not going away. And therefore, I think it's an opportunity to say, you know, that's part of what we're, we're teaching and learning about is how to use them appropriately. And, and I'm sure it's going to be a challenge, but I think that's really respectful.
Well, thank you. Um, just to be clear, yeah, it's going to be a challenge. It's been a challenge. And um, even though we didn't have these procedures spelled out last year, you know, kids knew that when we expected them put away, you know, that's, that's what we're expecting. And more than a few kids would, would push back and they'd push back all day long on that to the point where we really have to take this up a notch and then a notch and then a notch. And it turns into a whole thing. I hope that it's not as challenging as it was last year, but it, I, I really believe that we need to engage the kids with our teachers and um, get them disengaged from the phone so we can teach them. That's all. So thanks for your support. Okay, so restorative practices, we talked a lot about this last year. And um, we had, you know, a very busy school year with a lot of challenges. One of the things that we didn't have in place with regard to restorative practices was some real um, concrete, pardon the overuse of the word, practices in place. In other words, if so-and-so does such and such, what are we going to do? Here's, there's a short menu that includes the types of responses, the types of practices we can put in place. So that's been included in the handbook now. It's, there's a table in there and it all says it right here, where it has the typical progressive discipline practices for level one, for example, which were always included in the handbook. But now it has a table where it has the typical progressive discipline practices. And um, just opposite that, it has the restorative practices. So our aim is to use the restorative practices. But sometimes, you know, the, the real sort of starting point of that is taking responsibility for your actions. And sometimes students just refuse to take responsibility for their actions. So it's going to be a balancing act between, between these two things. But our hope is that over time, we can move more and more towards a restorative approach. We believe that that's the right approach. It's a teaching approach and it's a better learning approach. So um, those are listed next to the progressive discipline response. Any questions about that? Some similar stuff for Great Falls Middle School. Overall, we have tried to adjust the formatting to be more in line with the high school handbook. We've also rearranged some items so that the handbook is more user-friendly. Table of contents has been added with hyperlinks to different sections of the document for easy locating topics. In addition to a rearranging items so that similar topics are together, the following items have been added. The GM RSD mission statement, statement of non-discrimination, statement of equal access, Massachusetts General Law seventy-six, section five. That's just about equal access for education. Okay, it's basic, you know, all, all children have the right to education, blah, 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 in their district. But um, I want to point out that the attendance policy has been added for greater clarification and specificity, specifically regarding the definitions of unexcused and excused absences. And this has been adjusted to be similar how the high school policies and procedures are formatted for consistency. Alright. Additional contact, that is to say, contact information for teachers has been updated. As I said, the table of contents with hyperlinks, um, section on safety procedures similar to high school, meaning, you know, what happens in the event of a shelter in place, what happens with the lockdown, it just spells all that out. We've included the specific rules that the bus company has posted in each bus. Also, these, um, these rules and expectations are and have been in the high school handbook. And then athletic information, we have an awful lot of middle schoolers who are involved in athletics. And um, this will be helpful to them. This is specifics from the athletic director. Any questions about the middle school handbook? If I could, just one quick last thing. Again, I said this at the beginning, but you know, I don't see you all very often, but the work that you do is really important to us. And I just want to say thank you. If you ever need anything, please call, please, I don't, you know, stop by, you know, whatever the case may be. But um, we appreciate you. And um, if you ever need anything, please contact us. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Christopher. We appreciate it.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Jane, can I stay one more moment?
Sure, go ahead.
John had a comment earlier about, um, about when Brian was talking about the MCAS. And um, and what about opportunities for kids who are not inclined to go on to college? So just so everybody knows, you, you may have heard about this before. Through Desi, we have adopted two different pathways. They have an innovation pathways program. The health pathway, which provides kids with health classes and internships to receive a pretty entry-level certification. But, but a certification in a health pathway to get them a job upon graduating from high school. That will be in the beginning of our third year this coming year. And um, the manufacturing innovation pathway, which will teach kids to use manufacturing tools in conjunction with computers. So that they can use like a CNC machine and things that are more advanced than that. We're just starting that this year. And um, we're hoping that, you know, these are other ways. Instead of just being a sort of a college prep curriculum and programming school, we have these other opportunities for kids to pursue and find employment after graduation. I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good seeing you.
Thank you very much, Christopher. Have a good night. We'll see you in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That, thank you.
So I think our next job is to. I'll entertain a motion to approve the updated school handbooks with the understanding that the couple of things that were mentioned, updating the school committee list of members and the other things that were pointed out will be updated in the approval is with that understanding.
I'll move it.
Okay, Bill, thank you.
And I'll second.
John, thank you. Any other discussion about that? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick? John?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, thank you. The second item under business is approval for student lunch and milk prices. And this is only for students who wish to purchase an extra lunch or an extra milk. I just wanted to remind people, especially because there was information that came out yesterday about the federal government. But Massachusetts has passed a law, and I believe it's for this year, Joanne. I'm not sure if it goes longer, that all students in Massachusetts will get a free breakfast and a free lunch. Is that correct?
Yes. I believe it's just this year for now, to one year at a time that they put things in place.
Right. So it, no matter what the federal law is, which has not passed this, our state, Massachusetts, has voted to feed children breakfast and lunch, and I really am very pleased that that's happening. I think that's critical. But we need to set a price in case a student, particularly older students, want to purchase another meal or an extra milk. They certainly can do that. So our job is to set that price. And Joanne, if you want to explain that, that would help.
Okay, so so the lunch price, it's, it's the lunch price, even if all kids will receive one, but if they wanted the second one, the lunch price would be set at three dollars and fifty cents. A breakfast price would be set at a dollar seventy-five. And the milk would be fifty cents. And these numbers are up. The last time we had set a price, we were at two seventy-five. It's been a few years since we've changed that. So from two seventy-five up to three dollars and fifty cents. And the state actually has a minimum that we can charge for lunch, so we needed to get it above that minimum. And for breakfast, the last price we had was a dollar fifty for breakfast and we're going to one seventy-five. And I don't believe, oh no, the milk price was forty-five cents and that's going to fifty cents. So any student can add to their home lunch by choosing two or three fruits or vegetable option with a milk. And there's no charge. So that would be a free lunch. And because that would constitute a free, a reimbursable lunch. So we could suggest that. So if a student brings their bag lunch, so they have their main course, I guess, then they could choose two or three fruits or vegetables with milk for no charge and they can add to their lunch that they brought from home.
So that's great. I think that, is that something new?
Yes, that Molly is our new food service director, and this is a little informational blurb that she gave to me for this. And so she would like to publicize that, that they could get these items. And that would be a reimbursable meal for them, even if they don't like the main course.
No, I, I think that's really progress. I think that's helpful.
So I will have her put that into writing and give it to each of the principals so that they can send that out to the schools as well.
Oh.
We're getting this right. So we would need you to set the prices for lunch at three dollars and fifty cents. And these are student lunches. Three dollars and fifty cents, student breakfast, dollar seventy-five, and student milk, fifty cents. You have already set the prices for the adult meals. Because adults don't get free meals, so those prices have been set. And I don't want to tell you what I think they are because I'm not positive.
Right. We did those previously. I think it's five and three or something like that.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for these increases in the cost of the lunch breakfast.
Jane, I'm sorry. I think Nick has a question.
Can I just say one thing? So while we're talking about school lunch prices and the student handbooks, the, the handbook lists the wrong prices currently. The Gil student handbook is two dollars for an extra lunch, which isn't even what last year's price was, I don't think.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's probably from like two thousand and ten. No, good catch. I, I know one of the principals had already caught that and we alerted them to this on the agenda. So that'll be another change that they'll make to their handbooks.
Thank you. Very helpful, Nick. Yeah. Anyone else? Heather moved it. Thank you.
I'll second that.
And Nick seconded. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Okay, have a roll call, Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that will complete the business portion. No, I'm sorry. We have one more item. Sorry. Sadly. We still have an open Gil school committee seat. We have not gotten any letters of interest to take that position as of yet. So we will necessarily have to re-advertise that in the newspapers. And if people could spread it by word of mouth, if they happen to know anyone who might be interested, who is a Gil resident, we do have that one opening. And I hope we will find some before long. That would be great. And that completes the business section. We don't have any minutes to approve this evening. Agenda requests, please submit them to Bill, Brian, or myself. We will meet next Monday, late afternoon, early evening, as we usually do, to set the following agenda. And the following item, just as a reminder, because it's a different sequence, our next scheduled meetings are September sixth and September twentieth. That is a variation from our usual schedule. If there's nothing else, I think we have completed the work for this evening and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm up.
Heather, thank you.
Second.
And Nick? And a roll call, Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you.